All right. We've got six o'clock for the ball this, uh, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, Horicon Council Meeting Order, quick please call the roll.
Christine, Jim, Jim.
Here.
Forrest.
Here.
Lisa.
Here.
Marie.
Here.
Here.
You all rise? And join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Interelect, order, and justice stands on my nation. Under God, in the Father, who has created us, for all. All right, we have a vote on Council Minutes of July twenty-second and August fourteenth.
The move second.
Any discussion? All right, can I quick please call the roll?
Forrest.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Jim.
Next, we have public appearances.
None on the sheet.
None on the sheet. Last call, all right. Moving on, Personnel Finance Committee, Forrest.
Yep. Personal Finance Met, August nineteenth, six o'clock. Myself, or Premmy, Vanzma, present, Schmitz absent, no public appearances. Motion to approve June minutes. We had a motion to approve Resolution Twenty-five oh six. Motion to approve memo for Baker Tilly. Motion to approve the Horicon payment budget transfer for director pay increase. We have motion for scope of services from MSA. Construction observation of Finch Street. Another one for Moraine Park CSM. And the third one for Oak Hill Cemetery Easement Study. That was approved. We also have motion to do a change order for East Walnut and North South Street. And motion for the bills. Meeting adjourned at six thirty.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Works and Development, Jim. There are snow meeting. Public Safety, Marie.
Uh, Public Safety met August twelfth, and Vanski and Premmy were present, Premmy was absent. And a motion to approve minutes, no public appearances. We had a discussion on pedestrian safety and Horicon Schools opening. Police Chief Bergen provided a monthly update, Emergency Management Director Biederman provided a monthly update, EMS Assistant Gutenberg provided a monthly update, uh, no fire department update. We had discussion on electric devices in Horicon, reviewed state statutes and other city ordinances, and planning to move forward with developing an ordinance in the city of Horicon. Uh, we had a motion to approve the request from the Horicon Historical Society to close the street, uh, for haunted history tours that would pass. We had a motion to, uh, move a beer license for them, uh, to September tenth that passed. And we had a motion to approve a one-year operator license for Jessica Caesar, that motion failed. Uh, next meeting is, uh, September ninth, and motion adjourned.
Thank you. Park and Rec, Royce. Park and Rec was called the order at six thirty, or six thirty PM by Chairperson Remi. President was Remi Sullivan, Arson Mookie absent was cruel, there's a motion to approve last month's minutes. There's a Parks, Rec, and then Aquatic Center report, the Friends of Park on Parks update is they got a seventy-five thousand dollar matching grant. Um, there's a motion to approve the Phoenix Request for Amplified Music, and same with usage of the Quonis Park. There was discussion on the twenty-twenty-six Park Plan Updates, and then we set our next meeting first, November sixteenth at six PM, and then we adjourned at six thirty-three PM.
Thanks. Plan Commission, Lisa.
Uh, there wasn't any, man.
All right, so come up to my report. First, Horicon School District, St. Stevens, open next week. Good luck, just as usual. We'll have a lot of people running across Lake Street. We'll have, uh, our officers and others keeping an eye on them, so good luck to a great school year. I want to also thank the Aquatic Center staff for the summer, it was kind of a crazy summer, we had some ridiculously hot days. Multiple, uh, hundred-year rains. Yet somehow the, uh, pool still ran pretty smooth. A lot of times here in the last month or two, not a month or two, week or two, we've had pretty low, I guess, I don't know, very, very few people showed up, that's kind of what I was looking for. So, you know, something to look at next year again, thank you to our, uh, utilities guys for keeping that pool always running smooth. And then my final report, we, uh, on the treasurer position, we did the second round interviews yesterday, it was myself, Chris, and, uh, Baker Tilly. Uh, waiting to hear back from some stuff on Baker Tilly, and hopefully we can extend an offer Thursday or Friday after you're back from Baker. All right, moving on, we got Swerigut of our new part-time peace officer. See, like, between the camera so everyone can see you. I'm gonna face Chris.
You ready?
I am.
I speak your name.
I know a brand name.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Wisconsin.
State of Wisconsin.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of invasion.
Or purpose of invasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Say the same thing.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And in accordance.
And in accordance.
To a law enforcement court of justice.
And to a law enforcement court of justice.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
First time could be difficult.
Yeah. Oh, boy. I'm gonna stab you.
There should be a whole pair already.
Let's move out on the new shirts.
Okay, I got it, I got it. Boy, can we just pretend, like, I'll just set it like.
There's no blood, it's not official.
Maybe you help.
Is it good?
Yeah.
So Noel was one of number, uh, what, nine candidates. Obviously, he did the best, that's why I'm standing up here. I was fortunate enough to meet his parents outside, they're kind of a compliment. And I saw the look on their face. Twenty-nine years ago, my parents had that same look, and to this day, I don't know if it's because they were shocked I wasn't in jail, or that I actually made something of myself, so congratulations, Noel.
Definitely.
Congratulations.
See, it's only you, I need your.
I took him on as.
I'll sign it too, Chris.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and congratulations again. Uh, next, we're reacting on Resolution Twenty-five oh six, which relates to declaring official intent to reimburse expenditure for.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty-five oh six, as provided in your packet.
Second. Any discussion on the resolution?
This, what I mean, this is a resolution for interim financing to the waste management plan, saying that we're gonna borrow from multiple different sources beforehand before the actual main loan is taken for the plan.
Any questions for Tony? All right, Matt, quick please call the roll.
Forrest.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next, we're acting on a limited right of entry agreement for Moraine Park within the Marshall Crossing Business Park.
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure, please.
So, uh, this is the same approach that we used in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, as Moraine Park approached us, uh, to potentially acquire land out at Marshall Crossing. Uh, they would like to conduct some additional due diligence on other lands located within that property, and so what this agreement does is allow them the ability to, uh, go on city-owned land currently, uh, to conduct that due diligence prior to, uh, potential future, um, steps down the road. And those steps we'll discuss, uh, in the closed session, uh, later this evening. Uh, this agreement is good for four months approximately, uh, can be extended if needed, and the city attorney has reviewed and approved it, uh, from his perspective, so it's, it's just allowing them to do some additional, uh, site intelligence gathering.
I make a motion to, uh, approve the limited right of entry agreement. Second.
Any discussion? Questions for Ben? All right, Matt, quick please call the roll.
Forrest.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
All right, next, we're be, uh, Ben's gonna be doing a presentation discussion on the twenty twenty-five City of Horicon Annual Joint Review Board.
Yeah, so provided in your packet is the presentation that was given to the Joint Review Board during their annual meeting. Uh, this is an annual meeting that's required by state statutes. The Joint Review Board is made up of the taxing jurisdictions that overlap with the city, so the city, the school district, the tech college, and, uh, Dodge County. Uh, so that group, uh, gets an annual update on the TIP districts, and, uh, we gave that, uh, just a couple of weeks ago. So, uh, the mayor had suggested that we give the same, uh, presentation to you all, so you have a better understanding of what's going on in each of the tax increment finance and districts. Uh, so there's three total districts within the city today, TIP four, TIP five, and TIP six. Uh, TIP four includes, uh, the area on the western side of the city from State Highway thirty-three north to Lake Street. TIP five includes Deer one-on-one on the bar west side and the Marshall Crossing Business Park, and then TIP six is downtown, uh, covers most of, uh, the core area of, uh, the central business district. Uh, most, uh, TIP five and TIP six still have over a decade worth of life on them. TIP four is approaching the termination of its life in a couple of years from now. Uh, in respect to what's called the twelve percent standing, this is a statutory requirement that basically says that, uh, within your total assessed value for the entire community, no more than twelve percent could be located within a TIP district if the city wants to create any new TIP districts. As of, uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, the city just barely exceeded that total at thirteen percent, so that means that we cannot create a TIP this year, uh, which we weren't planning on doing anyway, uh, but when the reevaluation goes into effect, uh, at the next year's tax roll, uh, we do anticipate that number to drop below twelve percent again. Uh, we're tracking that and based off of some preliminary values, uh, that may be subject to change. Uh, so TIP four, I just wanted to mention, that's where city view and the existing buildout of the subdivision is occurring right now. That's where you, uh, see a large increase in the total value of that TIP, uh, between twenty twenty-three and twenty-four. Um, excuse me, uh, in, uh, in relationship to, uh, the, the cash flow for this year, or for twenty twenty-four, I should say, uh, we did have, um, large total expenditures, that's paying off the debt associated with the, uh, infrastructure for the subdivision, but we are experiencing, uh, pretty rapid buildout of that subdivision, which is a positive note, and is actually building out much quicker, uh, than what we had anticipated. So there is a graphic, uh, in your chart, and I'm sure you guys have all driven past there, a lot of those lots are accounted for in one way or the other, and, uh, the developer is very happy with, uh, the continued buildout, and we're anticipating that hopefully in the next year or two, we will be fully built out out there, uh, which is great for the city. Making that investment was a risk at that time, uh, but it has paid off in, in the terms of, uh, you know, a lot of new units and new construction, uh, in the city. So one thing to note about TIP four, and, and we, uh, approached this topic in relationship to when we took out the debt for the infrastructure, is that there was a limited life left on that TIP out to twenty twenty-seven at that time period. Uh, and it depended on how quickly that, uh, project builds out, and some other variables, um, in respect to whether we'd be able to close that TIP in twenty twenty-seven at the end of its life or not. So per state statutes, you are allowed to extend the life of the district if you can prove via an audit that you still need to capture more increment to pay the existing debt. And so as of right now, we don't know exactly if that's needed or not, but we wanted to make full transparency that it may be needed, uh, to extend the life of that district a year, two years, and three years, to pay off, uh, the remaining balance of that debt. Again, there's variables in play associated with the buildup and the reevaluation, uh, that are yet to, uh, kind of come to full fruition. TIP five covers, uh, mainly Deer is the increment generator in that district for the one-on-one facility. We saw a, a little bit of a change in value, uh, over the last year. But generally speaking, when you're looking at the cash flow analysis, uh, you see a negative balance this beginning year, that was associated with the infrastructure that went out in Marshall Crossing, and then you see a large total revenue, that's where the bond came into play to pay that off. Now, uh, the city will be paying those bond payments each year on an incremental basis moving forward, uh, but we still will remain with a positive cash flow balance. Uh, we just noted that we continue to market that property for a variety of different uses, have engagement through a variety of different resources, including the city's website and other economic development websites, we'll talk about another, uh, potential opportunity here later this evening as well. And then TIP six covers downtown, uh, marginal change, generally speaking, because there hasn't been substantial new development, uh, occurring in this area, which you guys are all aware of. Uh, as you can see in the cash flow analysis, there's a smaller amount of expenditures, a smaller amount of revenues, uh, because that hasn't taken place. However, we have, uh, the new Finch Street, uh, housing development that is now under construction, that will be a new increment generator within the district for the first time, the most substantial that we've seen, um, and so that will be a positive for this TIP district moving forward. We also wanted to provide a little background on the facade and building improvement grant. This was funded through the TIP district in terms of, uh, there's been three total awards thus far, uh, dating back to twenty twenty-three, approximately seventy thousand dollars in grants have been provided, and likewise, as a match, over three hundred thousand dollars in private investment has been, uh, attributed to downtown based off of those grant dollars, including new businesses and occupied, formerly, formerly vacant businesses that you guys can all see, um, right outside the door. And then, if you wanna, you know, spend a ton of time on this, we just talked about it a couple of months ago, the Dodge County Community Development Fund, we're looking at leveraging that program, uh, to potentially offer an op, an ability to redo the downtown parking lot. Uh, we, myself and the mayor, uh, participated in a meeting with Dodge County Advisory Committee on this grant, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, uh, we've heard generally positive feedback. We haven't gotten a, a yes or no answer yet, but we anticipate that within the next month, um, to, to be determined on that front. So overall, what we're trying to capture with this is that each TIP has a positive cash flow balance, but we continue to work the TIPs, meaning that we continue to find opportunities to leverage that available dollars and create new increment. And so, uh, our goal continuing moving forward is to lever, leverage those resources as best possible, and continue to generate new opportunities within the city of Horicon. Uh, I can answer any questions, but trying to keep it a little high level as, as an overview, rather than getting into the weeds on, uh, all the, the numbers and, and bore you to all the debt, but, uh, thank you, guys.
Any questions for Ben? All right, thanks, Ben. All right, next, we're gonna be acting on the memo agreement from Baker Tilly for the continuing county services, Forrest.
Uh, make a motion to approve the memo agreement from Baker Tilly as provided in your packet.
Second. Any discussion on the, uh, memo agreement? All right, Matt, quick please call the roll.
Forrest.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Next, we have acting on the Horicon Library Payment, Including Transfer of Funds for Library Director Pay Increase, Forrest.
Make a motion to approve the Horicon Library Payment, uh, including the budget to transfer Library Director Pay Increase, the amount of two thousand, three hundred and six dollars and two cents, coming from the TIP, I'm sorry.
On that note, I'd like to apologize, that we just noticed there wasn't a library report.
That's okay. I haven't been here that long.
Next month will be bigger and better, right?
Welcome back, Natalie.
Yeah.
Sorry. Any questions on the transfer of funds?
No.
All right, Matt, quick please call the roll.
Forrest.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
All right, next, we're gonna act on a scope of service agreement from MSA Professional Services for the construction observation for Finch Street. Forrest.
Make a motion to approve on this scope of service agreement from MSA Professional Services for construction observation of Finch Street. That's it.
Second. Any questions on this? All right, Matt, quick please call the roll.
Forrest.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Marie.
Bryce.
Aye.
All right, next, we're acting on a scope of service agreement from MSA for the Moraine Park CSM, Forrest.
Uh, we motion to approve the service agreement from MSA Professional Services for Moraine Park CSM, an amount of eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Second. Any questions on the CSM?
No.
Quick please call the roll.
Forrest.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Next, we're working on another scope of service agreement from MSA for Oak Hill Cemetery's Easement. Forrest.
Uh, make a motion to approve the scope of services agreement from MSA Professional Services for Oak Hill Cemetery Easement Study in the amount of seven thousand dollars.
Second. Any questions on this?
Wait, did you say seven thousand?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one hundred. Uh, yeah, it's supposed to be seventy-one, seventy-one hundred dollars. That's what it said in my head. Thanks, Bryce.
You're welcome. Any questions? All right, Matt, quick please call the roll.
Forrest.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
All right. Twenty-one, we're acting on the Change Order Number One for East Walnut, no Cedar Reconstruction Project, Forrest.
Make a motion to approve Change Order Number One, uh, for the East Walnut and Cedar Reconstruction Project, Reconstruction Project.
Second.
So, Change Order One for Walnut Street is basically changing the wage rate compliance for the project, so it's what the contractor has to pay his employee for the federal prevailing wage. Um, what happened was we were going out to bid, um, the admin people pulled the wage rates, put them in the bid, three days later it posted out to bid, it went to bid, we opened the bids two weeks later, and sometime in that fifteen-day window, the rate changed between starting the bid and ending the bid, and it wasn't caught, and it's just a different rate that the contractor has to pay his employees. Not many of them changed, it was enough that the contractor just ignored it and said, I get, you get fifty cents less, you get fifty cents more, or whatever the difference is, works out for the contractors, so there wasn't a change in the contract price on this one, it's just the behind-the-scenes paperwork for the, the contractors and the wages for the employees.
The grant is what's driving this, it's a no-cost change, and it's just so that we get the grant.
Oh, they were, guess to be correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
The funding people got this.
All right, any questions for Alex and Roy? If you're any, so, Chris, please call the, call the roll.
Forrest.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
All right, next, we're acting on Change Order Number Two for the same project, Forrest.
I get an explanation of this one first, this one didn't come through here. I only got to hear this one. Yeah, this one came in, like, the day after we did the.
Yeah, this one I was trying to put together in time for that meeting, and then wait to make it. Um, so this change order is basically things that we learned along the way, um, throughout construction. Number one, going into the alley, I don't even remember what blocks it's between, but there's that alley.
Between Clark and Finch.
Yeah, there's an alley going north of, of, of Finch Street, there was water service going up there that had a couple houses, that was a two-inch water service instead of resting at an inch and quarter, so we needed a bid item for that. Um, and then, next, there was, um, uh, we changed a little bit in the field for where we could put reducers, so we could be a little bit less invasive in intersections, like normally we would run the water main out to where we're gonna connect, reduce it from eight inch to six inch, and then we would run six inch over across the street and then connect it to the existing water main. Um, we ended up putting the reducer on this end instead of this end, so we had eight inch forty-five degree bends instead of six inch forty-five degree bends, and we didn't have a bid item for, we didn't have enough of those in the bid, I don't think. So we're losing, using three less six-inch bends and three more eight-inch bends.
That cost reflects the difference of using the eight versus the six.
It's the total, it's the total of the eight inch, it doesn't take the, not using the six inch, but, and actually, I lied, we're using two less, were you, two less six-inch and three eight-inch, because there was a connection that we actually had to go forty-five down, forty-five level, and then forty-five over across the street instead of corner to corner, because there was a weird depth change to the existing water main.
And if, this sets us up for the future, so that we're not invasive when we do the next connecting project with this, that we weren't planning on having to do, but it made it a lot better for the future.
Yeah, that connection, that specific connection was actually what's pointed to the two blocks of Walnut that we didn't do this year, it's just.
So where do you see the difference in not using the six inches then?
That'll be in the end of project budget, which I'm gonna ruin it a little bit for you.
Okay. Looking forward to it.
So, um, epoxy crosswalk, um, this was just a miss by me on most projects where we go into an intersection and stuff, we replace all of the concrete or all of the asphalt in the intersection where it's on the Highway twenty-eight, and we didn't, and we're gonna, but we're also going to repaint all of the crosswalk lines, uh, across the intersection, so you can't put new epoxy paint on top of used epoxy paint you got grinded off first, which usually we just have the concrete there, so I had to move it twice about it.
We're not repainting them either, just for, to make them look better, we're repainting them because the handicap approaches come out at different locations now, because they're ADA compliant, so they're shifted, so that they make, they meet that criteria, so the, the lines don't line up and you would have double lines in some areas.
Right, and the last big one on here is for eight-inch concrete, which is going further into the highway area to connect the water main, that was deeper there also. That was deeper there also.
Yeah, the plan, I believe existing plans were correct on that site.
Right, yeah, we didn't have a lot of records for where the water main was connected. So we took more concrete out on the highway. We need an extra thousand square feet of eight inch concrete. Um, so that's basically a twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollar change order. Um, I do want to take a minute and talk about the budget on the job in general. So, which may make you feel better, may make you feel worse, we'll see. Um, do you guys know what EBS is on a project? So like, we're putting the road base in, before, when we dig out the road, we put the road base in.
I'm just gonna say no.
Okay.
Let's call it gravel. It's your base, base courses of gravel that you put in there.
Well, when we dig out, when we dig out to put the gravel in for the road, we're gonna put four inches of asphalt, twelve inches of base down. Before we do that, we do, we dig everything out, we drive a full dump truck on it and see how soupy it is and decide is twelve inches of gravel. For the last twelve years I've been in Horicon, we kind of figure that on fifty percent of the job, we're gonna have to take out an extra foot of material. The rest should be good to stay. Um, that was not the case out here. It was pretty soupy the whole way, so. We're right now, we're estimating that we're gonna probably have eighty to eighty-five percent of the job being EBS. So what that means is that the EBS quantity right now is gonna be forty-one thousand dollars over budget. And the fabric on the job is sixty-two thousand dollars, sixty-two hundred dollars over budget. Uh, slightly better news is that on the rest of the project, I have at forty-five thousand dollars under budget. So that's only gonna put us like two grand over if we have this whole issue. Um, but my original hope was to tell you that, you know, yesterday, a week ago, I would have told you like, hey, we're forty-five thousand under budget, we're gonna be sitting pretty good even with this twenty thousand dollar change order. You know, we'll probably still be under the original contract amount. I can't say that anymore because of how soupy everything is out there. We're gonna, everything I saved on the whole rest of the project is gonna be spent on Cedar Street that is, that's out there in order to get a decent road down, so.
And is that related to like the excesses of grain that we've gotten in the last month?
Not really.
Yeah, I would like to say it was.
That doesn't help you by any means, but it's, it's pretty much just a soft black clay. There's a lot of topsoil with it too.
Yeah. What I'm seeing is like a lot of peat and topsoil mixed together. And it was really weird when we dug the sanitary water main trenches. They must have hall fact filled into this road way back when they did it with three fifties. Because we had a lot of sandy, gravelly, like good material. So we initially thought we were gonna be in great shape with the budget, but the outside edges of the road, probably you're all, if you consider it at thirds, you're outside two-thirds on, or a third on each side is what's bad. And none of it, none of it tests out for soil action that we can go over it.
So, short version, what I would anticipate now is we're approving twenty-two thousand dollars for a change order. The rest of the project that was the original almost two million dollar amount, we're probably gonna be within two to five grand out at the end, which is pretty close to our original estimate. But um, you're gonna, at the end of the project, we're gonna be twenty-three to twenty-five thousand dollars over, assuming nothing goes bad with the concrete here for like needing to take a driveway back excessively further or something like that with the plants. Um, and for that, we will have a change order three that's in several months. That come, that is basically just the formality of like, here's how much stuff we, we've put ten less feet of eight inch water main in. We've put twenty more feet of six inch water main in. And just the formality of this is what was actually installed out there, and it should be pretty close to that.
Yeah. And I would say most of the, at this point in the project, most of the unknowns are gone. We can see the driveway approaches, we know the sidewalk grade, all of the underground plumbing work is done. So I wouldn't suspect anything changing at this point.
Yeah, the only unknown for is the, like, the concrete driveways and tie-ins and stuff like that. Sometimes you take that saw joint another ten feet further because of something that's, you know, not.
True.
If if the road is all cracked up and you can clean it up, going another ten feet further usually we do that. Um, but that usually, again, that ends up being a couple of grand in the end. So. Does that help make it worse? I don't know.
I'd see worse.
I'd see why you are.
Being within a percent isn't all that awful.
No, I think in the end, we're gonna be less than two percent or one percent, so.
So it's going to be a problem.
Yeah.
It's one of those, we really like to be under budget, but sometimes just the unforeseen conditions.
We don't know.
Yeah.
Still looking for.
I'll make that motion to approve the change order number two for East Walnut Street North Cedar Reconstruction Project. Second.
Any last questions for Alex, Cody?
Thank you, guys.
Go.
All right, I hear you have questions. Please call the rule.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Jim. Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
All right, next, we're to act on a memorandum of understanding with the Horicon Professional Police Association for patrolman slash detective assignment overview. Forrest.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Horicon Professional Police Association for patrolman slash detective assignment overview.
Second. Any questions? Uh, do you want to explain kind of what's, what are you gonna do with that?
Yeah, that just gives me the ability to take Todd offline. And if like the search work we had last week, he was still taking assignments while I was trying to do this. And that means running the Madison, running the Dodge County, get assigned, things like that. It'd be nice to be able to move him and put him aside by the Horicon project at a time. So he'll still be taking assignments, but when something big comes up, I can take him offline and have him sort of assigned to whatever, whatever should come up. Comes with a one dollar pay increase. Um, and it's authored exactly after me goes, they got the same thing, so.
Any other questions for Chief? Here, not clerk, please call the rule.
Forrest.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
All right, next, we're gonna act on a street news permit to close West of Elm Street intersection on Winter Street from the Saturday Clark House from October tenth until November third, twenty twenty-five for the uh Horicon Historical Society for their Horicon Home and History Tours. Marie.
I'll make a motion to close the West of Elm Street intersection on Winter Street in front of Saturday Clark House from October tenth to November third, twenty twenty-five from the Horicon Historical Society for the Haunted History Tours.
Second.
Any questions for Marie? All right, not clerk, please call the rule.
Marie.
Aye.
Forrest.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Next, we're to act on a request to transfer temporary class B license from July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five to September tenth, twenty twenty-five for the Horicon Phoenix Program. Marie.
I'll make a motion to move the license to September tenth, twenty twenty-five for the Horicon Phoenix Program.
Second.
Any questions for Marie? All right, not clerk, please call the rule.
Marie.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Forrest.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Lisa.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Next, we're to act on a request for the use of Kiwanis Park, including the buildings by the Horicon Phoenix Program for a summer concert on September tenth, twenty twenty-five. Either rain made cancellation of July sixteenth. Bryce.
Full move.
Sorry.
Any questions? Not clerk, please call the rule.
Bryce.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
Forrest.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Next, we're to act on a request for use of applied music in Kiwanis Park by the Horicon Phoenix Program for music in the market on September tenth, twenty twenty-five. Bryce.
Full move.
Second. Any questions? Not clerk, please call the rule.
Bryce.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Forrest.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
All right, next is recommended practices for hosted virtual open meetings. Basically, we've had virtual open meetings for a while, either Zoom or now. A lot of them working on Teams, there's other options out there. And while we're going through the update of our personnel manual that we kind of got some stuff over to our attorneys, I wanted to get something in there, just basically recommended practices for hosting the virtual open meetings so we have something to reference, if and when we need to reference it.
Make a motion to approve the.
Recommended practices.
Recommended practices for hosting virtual meetings.
I'll second.
Any questions? All right, not clerk, please call the rule.
Christine.
Aye.
Forrest.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
All right, next, we have operator licenses. Marie.
So before I make that motion, um, this person, Jessica Caesar, uh, applied for operator license, and whose chief Burkin denied the license, and our group agreed in the last safety meeting. So just so that you know that I would quote no on it personally. Um, make a motion to approve the operator license for Jessica Caesar for one year.
Second.
All right, any questions for Marie on this? I think you explained what you're gonna explain. Not clerk, please call the rule.
Marie.
No.
Forrest.
No.
Jim.
Christine.
No.
Lisa.
No.
Bryce.
No.
All right, next, we have to act on the bills for July, Forrest.
Make a motion for the bills for July twenty twenty-five in the amount of one million forty-two thousand, hundred forty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Any discussion? All right, not clerk, please call the rule.
Forrest.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Christine.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Marie.
Aye.
Bryce.
Aye.
Next on here is uh next meeting date. Is there a problem with the next meeting date?
No, I just put that on there. It's a calendar.
Okay.